Hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yep.
Okay, so we are back and we seem to have sorted, hopefully, our IT issues. We are now on submissions to the public inquiry into the redevelopment of public housing. Are there any questions anyone has for the officers?
Yes, I do. It's Gaetano here.
Go Gaetano.
Yeah, I've got a number of questions. I'll start with the first one. Just through you, Mayor, to our officers. Has there been any consultation with the Home Street residents or by the state government? By the state government or the council in relation to the announcement of demolishing the towers at Home Street?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you for the question, councillor, through you, Mayor. We don't have information on the work that the state government has done to prepare their project to redevelop the social housing at Home Street, so I don't have that information.
Just in relation to the council, have we done any consultation with the residents at Home Street or not?
Thanks for the question, councillor, through you, Mayor. Council has not engaged in any formal consultation with the Home Street residents in preparing this submission.
Okay. My next question is that I understand that the Flemington site and the North Melbourne site, is it true that there will be no public housing where we're built on these sites? And that these sites, which is public land, will be sold to... Essentially, will be sold, it will no longer be public land?
Thank you for the question, councillor, through you, Mayor. The sites you're referring to aren't related to the Darabin sites and I don't have information on those redevelopment proposals.
Okay, I'll put the question in another way then. In relation to Home Street, from the information that we currently have, the sparse information that we have, will there be any public housing built at the Home Street site? And will the public land at Home Street remain public land? Or will it be sold under the state government's proposal to demolish the 44 towers across the Melbourne metropolitan area?
Thank you for the question, councillor Gaetano, through you, Mayor. The information in relation to the redevelopment of the Home Street public housing site is unclear and it hasn't been released.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Did you have another one, councillor Greco? No? Okay. No other questions? Okay. Oh, councillor Turry?
I do have another question, if I may, yeah?
Sure, go ahead.
It's just there's a lack of clarity here. Maybe I'm not hearing well enough or not. I just want to get an understanding is that with the state government's proposal, will it mean that there will be no public housing on the 44 sites that are in question? And from our perspective, obviously, Home Street. And will that public land on those 44 sites be sold to private owners? Whether they be non-for-profit or profit development?
I think that question's already been answered, but go ahead if you think there's something to add.
Thanks for the question, councillor Greco, through you, Mayor. There has been some information that's been released on some of the development of the towers that were listed as part of the 44. They have been announced to have a mixture of ownership in the future. It is unclear in relation to the Home Street towers on what the proposal is at the moment.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, do we have a mover for the motion?
I have a motion that I'd like to move, Mayor.
We've got councillor Turry first, but if...
Mayor, I think... I didn't see councillor Turry's hand go up. I can't put my hand up here on the screen. Often you don't see me on the screen, so...
Sorry, you can put your hand up. I do apologise. I have a few times earlier missed you and I'm caving. I saw councillor Turry and then I saw councillor Sangster next, so... Go ahead, councillor Turry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Say that again? The officer's recommendation? Okay, is there any second to the officer's? Councillor Selkos? So, does the mover wish to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, can I thank the officers for their work on this and for answering all our questions in the lead-up to this debate? We've got a very tight timeline with this in terms of submitting this on time and I know that councillors have been discussing amongst themselves a number of amendments that no doubt will be raised. But in any event, the submission that is before us in Appendix A, I guess first of all sets out the context of housing in Darabin. And I think most importantly makes some important recommendations. And just to pull out a few, obviously requesting some cost-benefit analysis considering the context of housing in Darabin, recommending a guaranteed right of return, which I believe has been the case with previous projects in Darabin, but a good recommendation nonetheless. I think going to one of the questions that councillor Greco put a moment ago, proper engagement residents and stakeholders and noting that there was in relation to previous projects of this nature, community consultative committees that were set up at that time, which I believe were quite successful in having people's views heard, including residents, on design and other aspects of the project. And of course, going to some of the questions that were put tonight during public question time, some information relating to the rationale behind the various options that have been canvassed by state government and indeed council in our submission. I think that what council should strive to do in its submissions is obviously advocate on behalf of our community, but also to strike a balance between robust advocacy and also to obtain a good outcome for residents and the community in Darabin, but also to collaborate and partner with the state government, which I think will ensure the best outcome for residents, not at any particular site, but across the various projects. And I think that other councils should adopt a similar approach. And also to the second part of the motion, clause two, in terms of the mayor writing a letter to the Minister of Housing, that of course should go to the recommendations explicitly outlined in our submission. And I would endorse this motion to the chamber and ask for other councillors' support.
Does the seconder wish to speak?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you councillor Turry. I'd like to echo your words as well. What we have before us is a comprehensive submission that's been done through our officers, so thank you to officers for the great work you've done. It gives strong recommendations to this inquiry. These recommendations include things like a breakdown of the number of bedrooms and dwellings and dwelling types before and after the redevelopment to ensure new housing stock aligns with our community needs. And also commitments to best practice standards for energy efficiency, sustainable building materials and water sensitive urban design, including the long-term operational affordability. And there, just to name a few, Mayor. I hope all councillors can support this motion with these strong recommendations to the inquiry, which can be further expanded on by the letter from our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have people opposed? So, sorry councillor Greco, councillor Sangster was the first with the hand up.
Sorry, I'd like to put forward an amendment, so I'm not opposed. It's an amendment.
So, would you like to tell us the nature of that amendment?
Yep, absolutely. So, I'd like to propose an amendment to the officer's recommendation, which we submitted and should appear on screen. You don't have that? From Ruth, yep. Sorry, it was from both of us. Yep. So, I'll start speaking while it appears on the screen.
So, yeah, I think first we have to ask if the... Okay. Does the mover of the motion accept these amendments?
I know we had an issue like this in the previous meeting where there are two amendments to two clauses, depending on what councillor Sangster's position is. I'm happy to accept the amendment to clause one, but not the amendment to clause two. But if we have to debate it in its entirety, then no.
Do you have a thought on that?
Mayor, I can't see the amendment. If you could be enlarged, please.
Is that better?
No.
Can we go any bigger? Can you see it now, councillor Greco?
No, not really, no. It's very difficult to see. It'd be difficult for me to see and also be difficult for people in the... watching us to see.
Do you want it to be read out or otherwise it was circulated at 1.50, but maybe for other people as well?
That's a bit better now. That's better.
Okay. Hi.
Yes, three, Mayor. Yes, I'm happy to accept councillor Turry's acceptance of number one if we get rid of number two.
Okay. So, is there a seconder to that motion then? Apologies?
Yeah, I accept that as well.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a seconder to that motion then?
So, the...
Yep, yep. Anyone? Yep, okay. So, one stays in, two comes out. Still writing a letter, covering the aspects of the... Regarding our submission, stays in. Yeah. Is that correct? Okay, so we have a motion mover, seconder, it's been amended and we've had agreement to that. Is there anyone now who would like to speak in opposition or for this submission?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to speak. Thank you to councillor Turry for your accepting the amendment. My rationale for the amendment is very simple. If we don't name public housing as public housing, then we lose it. Two weeks ago, the current Labour government confirmed that there will be no public housing rebuilt at Flemington and North Melbourne as they steamroll ahead with their plan to demolish the public housing towers at the sites. Labour has conceded that they have no intention to build any public homes at the sites and that they will be handing over all responsibility for the Flemington development to a private consortium. The plan will see Labour hand over publicly owned land to a private business who will be responsible for the entire design, construction and management, meaning that social units will be converted to privately owned community housing. The majority of housing built across the two sites will be private and expensive apartments, including 300 units of so-called affordable housing. Not a single unit at the new development will be public housing. Community housing is more expensive than public housing and community housing residents do not have the same rights. For example, public housing tenants have rents capped at 25% of household incomes and rights to a lifelong lease, which is incredibly important because many of these people do not get given leases by private businesses. Community housing tenants have to renew every three years and they can pay up to 30% of their income. These latest announcements from the Labour government make it very clear, if we do not name and fight for our public housing, we will lose it. And Darabin will be all the poorer for its lack of diversity and for failing to stand up for our most vulnerable communities. This is why it is integral that we include the word 'public housing' in our submission. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment.
Okay, go ahead. Does the mover...
Under point two, yep.
Does the mover of the motion accept this amendment?
No.
Seconder?
No.
Okay.
May I second it for my motion, for my amendment? At least to allow the debate?
Yeah, I haven't finished, so they haven't agreed to it, so it's now up for a seconder to if there is anyone who wishes to support this motion?
I'm seeking a seconder just to allow the debate.
Councillor Sangster?
I will second to allow debate.
Okay. So, would the mover like to speak?
Yes, I would, yeah. Thank you councillor Sangster, at least for allowing me to speak and so that we could have a public debate on this issue. Otherwise, it would have just lapsed and that would have been the end of the matter. Look councillor, what my amendment does, it tries to strengthen what the... What the submission currently says and actually even goes further. And I appreciate councillor Sangster's attempt to strengthen the submission, but I don't think it goes far enough, councillors. We heard from members from our community earlier tonight saying that council needs to take a stronger position. And the stronger position, councillor, is that we need to oppose the demolition of public housing and the selling off of public housing land to private developers, whether they are for-profit or non-for-profit developers. So, we need to take a strong position on this, councillors. Other councils have taken a strong position and we're lagging way behind. We've almost been apologetic to the state Labour government in its unilateral claim, almost Trumpian approach to saying these things have got to go without any substantiation, without any reports, without any information that actually could substantiate their claim of why the 44 towers needed to go. There's no evidence to that. In fact, residents of the Flemington and Towers had to lodge a class action in order to extract that information from the state government, which still is pending. So, what does the state government have to hide in relation to its justification for knocking down these things? It was, again, just a Trumpian call, Trump-style call, just go knock these things down and just move along. It's a really unconscionable act by the state government. And councillors, I think we need to take stronger action. What I've tried to do through this motion, and if you have a look at the points there, they make our submission much stronger, much more forceful in relation to state government. People may say, well, it's a bit idealistic to do that. Councillors, we had a similar situation in relation to Preston Market. The state government, through the VPA, wanted to knock down the Preston Market. The council put forward a strong position, campaigned around that position, and the result was that the Preston Market was retained as a result of the new planning controls. It can be done, councillors, and we should actually act on this because this is our opportunity to stand up for the most vulnerable in our community, aged, the centrelink recipients, refugees, of which we all talk so much about.
Respectfully councillor Greco, you need to wind up.
When it comes to the crunch, like decisions like this, we fall back. We don't live up to our standards, councillors. End of that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the seconder wish to speak to that motion?
Yes, through you, Mayor. I would like to speak for the motion. I actually believe that there's some fantastic points. I take councillor Greco's acknowledgement that it is idealistic and I recognise that the perfect can be the enemy of the good. And so we could feel that this is, we're asking too much here, but this is public housing for our public and so I'm in favour of this new motion.
Okay, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Turry?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, if you can just scroll up just for a second. I don't know where these points would actually fit into Appendix A, which is essentially what it's saying. I think it's just saying we emphasise the following points. Are we adding recommendations? Are we adding preamble? I just don't know where structurally, do they just go as an addendum at the end? I don't know. But I think going to the consultation point, it's my understanding that everyone's talking about Home Street in particular, that that's not earmarked for work for quite a while. There is opportunity to go through that process with residents and the community. There is also obviously this parliamentary inquiry that, it's not only Darabin that are a part of that, there is other local government areas and indeed other stakeholders, not just local government areas, that are making submissions, I would imagine, to this inquiry. So, I'd be very interested to see the result of that inquiry, which is not made up of members of a particular party. It's a parliamentary inquiry, a cross-party one, as I understand it. So, I think on the broader point, I don't know what objectives this seeks to achieve. And I think that in its current form, it is sufficient and we should support the submission in its current form despite... Oh, yep, of course. Despite the fact that some of these points, in particular requesting a formal apology from the state governments, may suit some politically, but I don't think that's a prudent road to go down.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm rising to support in favour of the intent of this motion, although I do have some concerns with some of the wording, but in its intent, I think it meets what I would hope we would be doing here. We've heard about the differences between the housing types and why public housing is so important, but some of it does warrant further reflection. Public housing is vital for providing stable, affordable living conditions for vulnerable families and individuals. It helps foster strong, supportive communities and offers people the stability they need to thrive. Demolishing public housing, especially in the midst of a housing crisis with tens of thousands of people on the waiting list and demand seeing record increases, is in my view morally, fiscally and environmentally irresponsible. Home Street in Northcote, which specifically houses older residents, many of whom have spent decades in this community, is especially valuable and vulnerable in this situation. The proposed demolition of this tower should raise serious concerns for all of us. As we saw with the devastating impacts on the Walker Street estate, demolition and relocation would fracture the local community and for some residents, it may also lead to isolation in their final years. Let's be clear here, even if there is a genuine pathway for a return to public housing, some may not live to see that. I commend the work that officers have done to strengthen this submission. I think it's most of the way there and I think we just need to be clearer in our ask as a council that we're echoing the recommendations, that we get stronger consultation and that we look at the refurbishment opportunities really specifically for this area in Northcote. Thank you.
Okay. Are we... councillor Jolly would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in regards to the various points of this amendment, I think it is important to note and emphasise the points about our council's position to oppose the demolition of the public housing towers, but I'm not convinced of the need to include point B. It's not included in, as far as I could see, in the submission itself and I'm not sure that's a point of fact that I couldn't really support. It's just, I'm not convinced of that one is my main point. And also, I don't... so, point three further down, I believe, you know, the only way that this could potentially work is if the state government actually funds Darabin council to do that consultation. So, I don't think this should be included in this amendment as it speaks at this point. So, Mayor, I'd like for you, if possible, to put this to the vote, point by point, so that we can indicate which elements we would like to support because not all of those elements can be supported by all of us, I believe.
Can I just pull out the three that you've got concerns with? Do others have specific reason to pull any out? Would you accept that councillor Greco, if it was those two that councillor Jolly suggested removing?
My preference is that they be voted as a block, but it's your discretion in relation to whether they are individually voted on or not.
I would suggest B if we take out B and we take out F.
So, B, F and three?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure what you're doing. You're just removing clauses, just...
To vote separately, but I'm just going to get some advice. Hang on a moment.
Okay.
Apologies councillor Greco. I think with the nature of the changes, it's difficult to pull out and vote on separately. If it was one, two and three and we wanted to vote on one as a point, two as a point, three as a point. Otherwise, I think the only way forward is an amendment to actually change those, to take those out. Otherwise, you'd be voting on one, A, B, C, D, E, F as all individual points, two and three, and then that's up to the mayor.
Councillor Jolly?
I'd be happy for you to block them as points one, two and three more broadly.
I'm happy to do that. Is that okay with you councillor Greco? We vote on one, two and three?
I don't understand what's being proposed. If that could be explained...
Vote separately on one, two and three.
Mayor, again, it's your discretion. It's not up to me. My preference would be that the amendment be voted as it is. But I'll leave it in your capable hands, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to vote on them as one, two and three. So, first, point one, those in favour, raise your hand. It's councillor Jolly, councillor O'Brien and councillor Sangster and councillor Greco. Those opposed, councillor Arturri, councillor Bogliss, councillor Demetriadis, councillor Selkos and myself, councillor Alaris. We'll go to number two. Those in favour, raise your hand. Oh, sorry. Those in favour, raise your hand. It's the same as the other one, but I guess we should do it. So, those in favour, raise your hand. That's unanimous. And then number three conducts a survey of residents... Hang on a moment, I need some advice. I think I need to explain this to people because I don't think we realise what we've... So, if we were to vote for number two and the next one doesn't get up, then that's our sol. That's all we're doing is writing a letter.
Is writing a letter. But a councillor could foreshadow, i.e. the previous one that we had, foreshadow that in the event of this one getting through, you'll move...
You want to do that, foreshadow your previous one? No, this is the motion. This is the current motion, so...
No, it is. Apologies, you're right councillor Arturri. So, it is an amendment. So...
Oh, we'll go back to the other one, but we've already accepted some of it. Oh, we'll go back to the other one, but we've already accepted some of it.
Mayor, if I can ask for a clarification. Point three, what is the status of point three?
If you, we're just trying to clarify the whole process at the moment, councillor Greco. So sorry, we'll do that in a moment.
Point two has been accepted by the council at this point in time. But that means that then the amendment becomes the motion and then you'll go through it. But the only, the amendment is, at this point in time, point two. Yep. If the amendment gets lost, the challenge has been that we've split it into three. And that's my advice that I gave you as well, that you could split one, two and three. Yeah, we absolutely could, we could put that again. I think just for clarity for all councillors and for the community, that for an amendment to get through, it needs to be the substantive amendment. What's happened here, of course, is at this point in time, there's only two. We haven't voted on three yet, councillor Greco. Is that, in essence, it's failed, but you'd have to go back to two before, you'd have to do a revote. You can do a revote on two. Because I expect that, maybe if you do three. So at this point in time, one and one has been. And then we go back and revisit number two. Because you've already voted on it. So if you go to three, if you go to three now and just get the outcome of that, well, we've already done two. Well, either, either it's got to be done, whether you do three.
Can we just discuss this without, thank you.
Mayor and CEO, if it helps, I'm happy to vote three and to move that as a separate amendment.
So just to clarify for people, should, we can go to three. We will then come back to a motion which will just be point two for voting on. And that's the end of, if that one is successful, then there's no further amendments. Okay. Would you like to go back and do number two again, or do you want to just continue on? Or continue on, go on. Councillor Jellie, what would you like to say? And then councillor Selkos.
Thank you, mayor. I believe so there is no amendment that's proposed on the table for point two. So if we're talking about voting on the amendment, which is, I believe, is what we're discussing here. We voted on the amendment that's proposed to point one. There is nothing that's proposed to amend point two. And so the next thing to do would be to address whether or not we, to vote on the amendment that's contained under point three. So then we can establish what the substantive motion is.
Okay, so we just need to remove that vote on two, it wasn't required. Okay, so we're up to number three, can we do that? Can we remove that vote? Up to number three, which is conducts a thorough survey of respondents at 12 Home Street, that one. All those in favour, raise your hand. That's councillor Greco, all those opposed, raise your hand. So that's councillor Arturri, Bogliss, Dimitriadis, Jellie, O'Brien, Sangster, Selkos and Olaris. So that, that motion now lapses. That amendment now lapses and we go back to the first amended motion, which is councillor Arturri's your motion with the amendment that came through via councillor Jellie. Okay, can we just go to a vote on this one in whole?
Mayor, I have some, I wish to speak for the substantive motion, if that's okay.
You may. And I think councillor Greco has something to say as well. So we'll come to you next, councillor Greco.
Thank you, mayor, for navigating that difficult process there. As we, as was reported in the Age recently, the state government's latest plans for redeveloping public housing towers is to knock them down and sell the land off to private developers with no provision to rebuild any public housing whatsoever. If ever there was a case to demonstrate the need for publicly built housing, this is it. We do not want to see the demolition of any more public housing towers in Darabin, especially if it leads to the displacement of residents and a reduction in public housing. This is not what our community has told us. The draft submission notes that the significant impacts that public housing demolition has had to date in our local community, with residents from Walker Street still not back in their homes seven years after it was demolished. We know that we are in the middle of a housing crisis and all the evidence points to the need for public housing to ensure we don't see skyrocketing rates of homelessness. Victoria has the lowest rates of social housing as proportion of overall housing stock in all of Australia. This is a disgraceful statistic for what is arguably the most progressive state in this country. People deserve to have somewhere to call home in order to live with dignity. And what public housing provides is a safety net in a way that social or community housing does not. As councillor Sangster noted earlier, there is a significant difference between public housing, social housing and community housing. If the government proceeds to demolish the homes in Home Street, in those towers and sell it off to private developers, some of those elderly residents will never get to return to their homes. They will be displaced from their communities and deprived of the opportunity to see out their days amongst the community that currently sustains them and supports them. There is no dignity in that. We have a duty as councillors to call on the state government to treat these residents with the dignity that they deserve, to preserve their homes through refurbishment and to build more public housing to match the levels seen in other states. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? And I believe I'll probably still go back to you in a moment for right of reply. But is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Yes, I'd like to speak, mayor.
Go ahead, councillor Greco.
Okay, just in relation to the motion that's been put, notwithstanding the changes put forward by councillor Sangster, I believe it's not strong enough. And the arguments that were put by the mover and the second, I didn't hear any arguments from the second. I didn't hear any arguments, really. There's no substantive arguments apart from procedural matters. There was no actual substantive arguments that were put in regards to rejecting my amendment. Councillor Jellie put it well, and also the other councillors that spoke in favour of the amendment that I was trying to put, explained the overall issues associated with that public housing. What we're doing, councillors, by not supporting or opposing the demolition of public housing, we're saying goodbye to public housing as we have known it and handing it over to private and not-for-private developers. And not only that, we're also handing over, we're handing over private land, public land to private and not-for-private developers. This is privatisation by state.
What's your point of order?
It's actually 10.1. C. It's outside of council's powers. We're not giving away the land.
I think that's a reasonable point, if you could keep to matters that are within the council remit. Thank you.
Just to be clear, it's the state government, the state Labour government, that is giving away state land, public land to private developers in order for that to be done. And the final thing that I'll say is that I hope that the Labour councillors don't continue to vote as a block in order to protect their Labour colleagues and ministers over matters of such.
Councillor Greco, you need to wind up.
So vote with your conscience, guys.
Thank you, I think you'll find that we are. I would just like to add something before we come back for the right of reply. And I guess from me, the submission as written by the staff recommends a transparent cost benefit analysis and rationale for refurbishment compared to demolition. So that's absolutely one of the requests, that's all recommendations that's put in this report. And without that information, I really don't feel that we're in a position to say whether there should be refurb or redevelopment. I also think there's many safety considerations that come into effect that, again, we are not privy to in relation to Home Street. But certainly, I know with some of the housing estates, there are showers that you need to step into in order to have your shower, which has particular issues for older people and people with disabilities. There are aging lifts that break down, which really restrict people's safety and ability to get in and out of the building. And, you know, this happens frequently in public housing estates, in the towers. Some of them, and I'm not sure about Home Street, but are built at a time where there was asbestos. So there's a number of reasons why you would need to think carefully about the decision to refurb versus rebuild. And we're not privy to that information at the moment. So I don't believe that we're in a position to push one over the other, but we have requested that information. So that's all that I wanted to add to the discussion now. And we'll go to councillor Arturri to see if you've got a right of reply.
Just a few brief comments. Thank councillor Greco for that very personal and political speech, but that's okay. What I would say is that the recommendations that we've, that's included in Appendix A, I think put, as you've outlined just now, mayor, some very important legitimate questions, including with the addition of that one there from councillor Sangster. Some important questions, as I said. And I think that the inquiry will be served well by these questions.
Point of order, mayor, point of order. I'm not, councillor Arturri, but the point of order is in relation to councillor Arturri, not in his right of reply. He's not addressing the issues that were raised and objecting to this motion or the concerns that are associated with this motion.
To the point of order?
Which point of order is that?
Can I speak to the point?
Can you tell me the number of it?
Well, if I can get some assistance from officers, I think it's in relation to, it's 10 point. Just a moment.
The governance team here can't find anything that relates to that. Are we happy to just continue if you make sure you keep to the point, councillor Arturri?
I'd just say that.
Is that okay, councillor Greco? We can't find anything in the governance point of order, in the governance manual that matches that. But I will ask councillor Arturri to make sure he's speaking to topic.
I'd just say to the point of order that if I'm saying, if other councillors have said that it's not sufficient and I'm making arguments to say why it's sufficient, I'm pretty sure that's well in order. But I think we've done some good work on this, it asks legitimate questions. And I'm happy for this to go to the inquiry. And that's why I have moved this motion.
Okay, we will go to the vote now. So all those in favour of the submission, just clarifying, it's number one and the first sentence of number two, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Arturri, councillor Bogliss, councillor Dimitriadis, councillor Jellie, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos and myself and councillor Greco. Okay.
That's in relation, mayor, I'm voting in relation to point number one. I'm not sure what I've seen on the screen here.
Point one and the first sentence of point two, which endorses the mayor to write a letter to the minister on housing on behalf of council regarding our submission. Are you voting for that?
If that's the case, mayor, I am abstaining.
Okay, so councillor Greco abstains. So that is passed. So we will move along. Okay, 9.6, we've got 25 minutes, so let's see how we go, we might need to extend. So it's a plant-based treaty and food resilience scoping study update. Councillors, do you have any questions of the staff regarding this item? Councillor Arturri?
Just a very brief question with the two options presented in the report. Would it be open to council once the food resilience scoping study has come back to at that point withdraw? In that sense, that there wouldn't be substantive difference in terms of the work done between now and the delivery of the food resilience scoping study when the time comes? That was a poorly worded question, but tell me if you want to reword it.
So I think, I'll take that, mayor, if I may. So I think councillor Arturri, are you talking about option two? Because that says to revisit.
Regardless of the option that councillors go for, is there a substantive difference between the work that would be done on the plant-based treaty between now and when the scoping study is delivered?
Yes. There is a substantive difference. So no work would be done on the plant-based treaty itself. But bear in mind that it is a component of the broader food resilience scoping study. We just wouldn't be pursuing the plant-based treaty side of it if option one was taken.
Sorry, I'm just saying, isn't that too true as well? If the plant-based treaty is on hold for that period of time?
Plant-based treaty will be withdrawn from option one. And option two, it's on hold, subject to the outcome of the food resilience scoping study. And a further report would come back to council.
Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. I'd just like to understand with the plant-based treaty and also with the scoping study, what benefits would they bring to the Darabin community in a more immediate sense regarding the cost of living crisis that people are currently facing? Will it put food on people's tables now? Can I get some clarity on that through you, from our offices? Thank you. How immediate are those two policies in alleviating food insecurity in our city?
I'll take that one through you, mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor Greco. So the short answer is there is no immediate effect. The scoping study will have at its forefront food security and food availability. And of course, cost and cost of living will be part of it. So it will, and it is fundamentally about addressing food security as part of the food resilience scoping study. So it could be outcomes such as community gardens, et cetera, et cetera. But nothing would come immediately as far as putting food on the table with either option.
I've got a follow-up question. So what substantive impact will these two, whether it's the plant-based treaty or the scoping study, what substantive impact will they have in regards to improving food security in our community, given that we're currently facing a cost of living crisis where people are finding it difficult putting food on their table?
Well, I guess as detailed in the report, councillor Greco, through you, mayor, the purpose of the study is to analyse the state of the current food system, identify the vulnerabilities both in our community and with the various food groups and risks, and then recommend priority actions to enhance food resilience by 2030 in Darabin. So that's the outcome that's expected from the food resilience scoping study. Clearly being part of the plant-based treaty was another component of it that was in there, which is, one option is to not continue with it and the other one is to put it on hold until such time as the scoping study is completed.
And the final question that I have is, what is the cost to the council in pursuing a food-based, a plant-based treaty or the scoping study? What is the cost that council will be incurring as either in relation to option one or option two?
Thanks again for the question, councillor. I know there was a budget allocation, which is in the body of the report, but then also, I think the total project was about 50,000 or thereabouts, 5,000 was. I think the total project was about 50,000 or thereabouts, 5,000 was for the plant-based treaty, I understand. But as it says in the discussion, we've not fully assessed or costed the plant-based treaty action that could be implemented. But two examples that are in there is a public information campaign, which is 25, costed 25,000. And then an analysis of Darabin's food consumption and greenhouse gas impacts of 20,000. So that's $45,000 for the plant-based treaty, two actions out of the plant-based treaty.
Okay, are there any further questions that councillors would like to ask in clarifying what's before us? Okay, would anyone like to put a motion forward? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak to the amended motion that I shared with councillors and officers earlier today.
Is, I'm presuming that's option two of those?
Yes, so it was an adjustment to step out option two in a little bit more detail to give some more context and timing.
Sorry, is there a second for that? Thank you councillor Sangster, would you like to speak to that motion councillor Jelly?
O'Brien, I will, thank you, Mayor. So yes, as shared with my fellow councillors, I'm putting forward this amendment to try strike a balance on this motion. The amendment outlines option two in more detail to aim to make us make a more informed decision at a later date. I find it disappointing that we're dealing with two separate issues that have been unnecessarily conflated here. On the one hand, we have the food resilience scoping study, which looks at food security and climate risk in Darabin, an important initiative within our climate emergency plan. On the other, we have the plant-based treaty, which was unanimously adopted by the previous council as part of last year's budget. I'm perplexed by why the food resilience scoping study and plant-based treaty were tied together in the amendment in a recent meeting, with us now finding us considering a proposition of withdrawing from a commitment that has positioned us as leaders in Australia. To my mind, remaining committed to the plant-based treaty aligns with the intent of our climate emergency plan and food security issues as raised in the paper. One of the treaty commitments is specifically that, and I quote, "Food security should be placed as a priority for all nations with a focus on ending poverty and hunger." The plant-based treaty website clearly states that cities endorsing the treaty are not legally bound but are encouraged to adopt meaningful changes in plant-based food policies and rewilding as it relates to their own priorities. Upon reviewing the commitments, I found that 17 to 21 of them align with our ongoing work in Darabin. Some of these are already happening in line with other priorities and don't really require additional work or investment for us to actually have meaningful action continue. To align with others would largely be a communications exercise as we identify their links in other commitments through the climate emergency plan and our breathing place strategy. Or we may decide to invest in some more fully. We get to decide how far we go with this commitment. Withdrawing from the plant-based treaty without clear rationale risks signalling to our community that we're not serious about climate action, something that we know is a top priority for them. I urge my colleagues to vote for option two so that we can take a phased evidence-based approach on this decision, allowing us to move forward responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. I did neglect to ask if anyone had any questions on this amended version. Okay, does the second wish to speak?
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in support of the amendment and to say that to do nothing in this space is actually already to do something. We can continue to be part of this treaty without it having any impact on our bottom financial line. And as councillor O'Brien has pointed out, council is already aligned with up to 21 of the goals. And we are taking action in other spaces of work that relate to eight of them. To pull out signifies an active antagonism to best advice regarding food security and the climate crisis. To stay in shows that we are prepared to work imaginatively and with the best current scientific advice to do everything we can to mitigate the impacts of the unfolding climate catastrophe, including the very real threat of food shortages due to unsustainable farming practices and an over-reliance on meat production, which we all know comes at a huge financial, environmental and some would argue moral cost. The plant-based treaty acknowledges that food production and consumption are key drivers in the climate emergency. Why on earth would we want to step away from being part of some important treaty when being part of it costs us nothing and stepping away from it signifies antagonism and apathy?
Does anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Demetriadis?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to flag that I'll be raising an alternate motion to support the officer's recommendation if this motion fails. Tonight, some councillors have been talking about best advice and recommendations. However, it's been over, close to almost over a year since the resolution was passed by the previous council to support this treaty, this international treaty. And since then, no other Australian council has agreed to sign it. I believe without council having gone out to dedicated community consultation, it is inappropriate to commit our community members and this council to sign an international treaty that makes demands on people's lives. While I understand the food does contribute significantly to the climate emergency, we should continue to address food insecurity in Darabin as we decided last term. And I believe council should accept the independent assessment by our expert officers in climate and equity, which is to refer, withdraw from the plant-based treaty to enable a focus on resources to support community, particularly where there is most need, especially in a cost of living crisis.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking in support of this motion, simply to point out that the treaty aims to put food systems at the forefront of combating the climate crisis to halt the widespread degradation of critical ecosystems caused by animal agriculture. That is in the wording of what the treaty itself. If we do not support action on preventing the collapse of food systems, we will only ensure increased food insecurity across the world, including here in Darabin. So we would be letting down the very people that were working to support through the food resilience study. So it makes absolutely no sense to be saying out of one side of our mouths that we support a food resilience study and then to be saying out of the other side of our mouth that we intend to take no action to ensure that the global food system has some sustainability ongoing into the future. So this motion actually proposes that we do the food security, the food resilience scoping study first and then to focus on the plant-based treaty after that.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Mayor, we've lost councillor Greco.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay. We'll need to wait for him. Okay, perhaps I'll speak to this and then I'll go back to you, Jelly, for a right of reply. Unless we've got Gattano back by then. Sorry, you don't get a right of reply because it's an amended motion. No, it's just a motion. It's just a motion. You do get a right of reply. I'm sorry, I'll come back to you in a moment. From mine, I find this a tricky one because I I guess I do feel like the plant-based treaty is a bit of an overreach for local government. I think there's a small number of things that sit within it that we can absolutely do and are already doing. I think there's not, there's a lot that are not in the realm of local government, so I find that, you know, not sure where to sit with that. But I also like the idea of an evidence-based approach, so I'm kind of, yeah. I think there's, I agree with both for different reasons. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say, I think. Councillor O'Brien, do you want to have a right of reply?
Yes, Mayor, I do indeed, thank you. So I'll pick up on councillor Demetriadis's point, first of all, of the treaty not being supported by other councils since Darabin voted to commit to it last year. As far as I can tell, she's correct that no other complete councils have. But over 20 other councils, councillors from other councils across the nation are represented on the website as having been signatories to this. In Victoria, these councils include Wyndham, Banual, Glenira, Horsham, Nillumburk, Yarra Ranges, Monash and Moreington Peninsula. And I would say those councillors have put their hat in the ring on this matter because they understand how it links to climate emergency and how important that is. The fact that they couldn't get consensus around the table to get other people to join them in this important treaty, I think is probably why they're there alone and not as a full council body as we are. I really think that is even more evidence that we are in a leadership position on this matter and that we should be sticking to that leadership position and showing the way for others. And in terms of items that are not in the realm of local government, Mayor, to your point, absolutely, some of them are not. That's never been the claim of this. Indeed, in the information that I shared around with councillors through the week on this, I identified 19 that are definitely out of our realm in terms of what doesn't apply to us. But these frameworks, that's how they work. You take on board what you can manage, what's material to your organisation and what makes sense for you to work towards. And I implore us all to do that right now. Thank you.
Okay. I think we just have to continue on. Unfortunately, they're trying they're trying to get councillor Greco back. But so far, we haven't been successful in contacting him, so I think we just need to continue to the vote at this point. So those in favour of the motion as it sits? No? With him in? Those in favour? Yeah. So councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster. Those opposed? Councillor Arturi, councillor Bogliss, councillor Demetriadis, councillor Selkos and I'm being offensive, I'm afraid, I'm not voting, so I'm abstaining from the vote. So that's, that means that that's not carried. So I think we go back to, oh-
Mayor, I'd like to move a procedural motion to extend the meeting time by half an hour, given that we are nearly 9pm.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Bogliss, all those in favour? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. I don't think, as the chair, you can vote to abstain when you're the deciding vote. Because she's got the decision.
No, it's 4-3.
So 4-4?
4-3.
And Christine's abstaining, oh. Oh, I see. So is, sorry, is the motion back on the table? Oh, my apologies. Mayor, I've got to, I'd like to, sorry, raise, yes, thank you, sorry about that. Sorry. I'd like to move option one.
Is there a second for option one, councillor Selkos? Would you like to speak to option one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank the officers for putting this report together. I commend the officer's recommendation for council to continue its work to help address food insecurity in Darabin through its delivery of the food resilience scoping study and withdrawing council from the plant-based treaty to enable a focus of resources to support community, particularly where there is most need. The endorsement of the plant-based treaty was a decision of the previous council as we know, but it was done without a dedicated community consultation. And I believe it was inappropriate to commit our community and this council to sign an international treaty that makes multiple demands on us, not only demands that would impact people's lives but also require us to fund a transition to a plant-based economy during a time when Darabin council is facing-
Point of order, Mayor?
-financial constraints.
That is 10.1, 10.1.1.1 B relevant to the matter under consideration.
So what was not relevant, sorry?
Sorry, Mayor, I misunderstood what was on the screen there. I've withdrawn my point of order. I would like to raise an alternate point of order, please, Mayor.
Yeah.
10.1G is a misleading or false statement.
And what was the statement, sorry, I got confused at this point?
Councillor Demetriadis is presenting them as demands that are applicable to everybody, that is, that's not the case with this treaty.
Fair enough, I'll accept that. Continue on, please. Try and give factual statements.
Oh, sure, the demands are actually in the, so demands are actually written in the plant-based treaty, they're actually called demands. There's about 16 of them. I'm sure anyone who's read them would know that they're called demands. But basically, what I was saying was-
Is the point there is that they can be chosen or not chosen? Is that correct?
But they're called, yes, so they're called demands, which is hence what, sorry, I should just say demands in quotation. So these demands in quotation would impact people's lives but also require us to fund a transition to a plant-based economy during a time when Darabin council is facing financial constraints. As we've heard from the CEO tonight, this will have no immediate impact on our community, especially those who can't afford food on the table, despite this project costing council $50,000. The demands in quotation of the plant-based treaty-
Point of order. Sorry, through you, Mayor. It's not going to cost us $50,000. It's, if we go with option two, which has been struck off, we are continuing to remain in the plant-based treaty and we're committing to the work that we're already doing that is already being covered and paid for. So there is no $50,000 cost to council.
Yeah, I think-
Sorry, Mayor, can I?
Hang on a moment. So are you saying it's G that you're referring to, misleading or false statement? And what is misleading about it?
It's misleading to say that it's going to cost us $50,000 based on, yes, if we go through in the way that we've put forward an amendment though. So based on the amendment, it's not going to cost us $50,000. Option one is not going to cost us $50,000. We're saying the plant-based treaty does not have to cost us $50,000.
Sorry, Mayor, my exact quote was that this project will cost us $50,000.
This project won't cost us $50,000 if we don't enact it in the way-
Okay, yeah, I think we need to stop the debate if we can just let councillor Demetriadis continue.
Only if she speaks truthfully and doesn't mock other councillors.
Sorry, Mayor, just to continue, I was quoting-
Your statement was also mocking, so can we all behave respectfully to one another, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just quoting the CEO's response to councillor Greco's question. The response was that it would cost council $50,000, this project. So back to the demands of the plant-based treaty, they also impact many members of our community. For instance, demand one requires the transition-
Point of order, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm going to raise the same point of order, 10.1G, misleading or false statement and-
Look, I do agree, I think that the demands are things that we can choose as a part of the scoping, as a part of the-
The exact wording are the three core principles, which are the three things that have the word demand next to them, and 40 suggested proposals as outlined below. That's the actual language.
Mayor, this is getting into debate.
I did, I know, but I think councillor Jelly was explaining the reason she thinks it's misleading and I do agree, so can you?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So I'll just talk about demand one then, which is from the actual plant-based treaty quoted, "Requires the transition to plant-based meals in schools, hospital, nursing homes, prisons, government institutions, university and businesses." Without having gone out to ask the community if they want to be included in these sorts of demands, I would say, but whatever the demand is or whatever the word we could use, I personally find it inappropriate to force them onto community, or not necessarily force them, but to put them on to community members through council. So I was hoping that councillors would support this recommendation and ensure resources are focused to support community, particularly where there is the most need. Thank you again to the climate and equity team for reviewing the Plant-Based Treaty.
Okay, who was the second? Would you like to speak to this?
I'll reserve my right.
Okay. Those opposed, I'm sure we have some here, it's your ability to debate on this matter, but no, do you want to speak to it? Yep, councillor O'Brien.
Yes, mayor, I'll just rise to provide some clarifications so that we're clear on what we're talking about here. So the wording, individuals, groups, businesses and cities that endorse the Plant-Based Treaty are expressing their support for national governments to come together to negotiate a global plant-based treaty, including the three core principles, which the word demand is used in, in part of the website, I agree, and forty suggested proposals as outlined below. This does not commit us to having to do anything in these forty commitments unless they are meaningful to us. It does not force us to stop people in schools or hospitals eating meat. That's not something that I believe we would choose to do. But it does, what it does do is align with our climate emergency plan, our breathing space strategy and the many things within it that are very dear to this community. And part of that and part of point three in the proposal is specifically about food security as well. So they're not at odds with each other, they actually complement each other really well. And I just, I don't understand why we're debating this at all, but councillor Dimitriatus' point of it being voted on by the previous council, that is not a valid, really valid point to continue voting things down or re-prosecuting things in this chamber. Decisions can move forward. We have voted to stop other things because councillor Dimitriatus didn't want those either. So I think we just focus on what's in front of us. Focus on what's in front of us and see that they do align and they do have meaning for our community. Thank you.
Okay. If we can keep from having personal goes at each other.
Then I move a procedural motion that this item be put. Nine point two point five.
Sorry? A procedural motion that.
The item be put, so we can vote on it.
Oh, be put. Okay. Has everyone had, everyone that wanted to had an option?
Mayor, I'd like to make a quick.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Sorry, I think we need to finish letting people speak, so.
Thank you, mayor, very quickly, I'd just like to say that if we vote in support of this motion, we are basically declaring that we no longer want to be a leader in climate action and emergency and resilience in Australia.
Okay, and welcome back councillor Greco. Did you have anything you wanted to say to this point? We're on option one.
Hello, I'm sorry, yeah, just got back in, I just caught the end of that. But I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will move to the vote now. Oh, councillor Dimitriatus.
I believe I have a right of reply.
Oh, sorry, of course.
Just quickly, I just wanted to respond to.
Sorry, mayor, just a point of, just a point of clarification in terms of process. I know I came in on this late, but I think there was a motion, a procedural motion put about that the motion be put and how we're going to deal with that.
So I suggested that I felt people should have a right to speak and that we would continue for a little bit longer. Yeah. So continue on councillor Dimitriatus.
Oh, thank you, mayor, I just wanted to make some clarifications. Never in my speech tonight or ever did I say that it forces us to stop eating meat. My point has been that we did not go to community consultation on this matter and I believe the community should be informed and allowed to have a say because it will impact any, impact their, their lives. And at no time does removing, withdrawing from the Plant-Based Treaty mean that we are not a leader in climate action. We are taking the advice of the officers who have provided an independent assessment. They're experts in both climate and equity and this is the position that they've presented to us. So I'm taking the officer's advice on this and I thank them for their report.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the vote. So those in favour of option one up there on the screen, please raise your hand. So there's councillor Arturi, councillor Bogliss, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Selkos, those opposed, councillor, sorry, I've gone Jelly, O'Brien, Sangster. Those abstaining? Councillor Greco, you're going to vote one way, you're abstaining? Yeah, so councillor Greco and councillor Ollaris abstaining from the vote. That's, doesn't work, I can't do that, can I? That is three, oh no, that does work. Sorry. Right. One, the councillor Greco abstained, so that's against.
You counted as no.
Yes. On four, so I need to do as deciding vote, right? That's a negative. Yeah, so, okay, so that's no's win. So I have to vote. No, I think the motion's just lost. We're looking for another motion.
I'll put one forward, mayor.
Go ahead.
I may require the assistance of officers as we're doing this on the fly, but aversion. Option two, yeah, that's the cleanest one.
Hey, would anyone like to second that version? Councillor Jelly?
Mayor, just a point of order, I'm not sure whether, are we putting back a motion that was previously discussed?
No, it hasn't, it hasn't gone forward councillor Greco. It was an amended version, was the first version. So this one hasn't gone up yet. Yep. So do we have a, we've got a second, would the mover like to speak to this?
I don't believe I need to speak, mayor, I think I've said everything I need to on this, thank you.
Yeah, I think we've done quite a lot of speaking. If you've got anything to add, shall we just move to a vote? Okay, so all those in favour, raise your hand. So that's councillor Arturi, councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Ollaris, those against. Councillor Selkos, councillor Bogliss. Those abstaining? Councillor Dimitriatus. Councillor Greco, are you going to vote?
Mayor, I'm not sure what I'm voting on at the moment, I'm just a bit confused of the process.
Option two.
Where we're at.
Option two.
I can barely see option two on the screen.
It is in the papers as well.
Yeah.
It's that the council continues its work to address food security in Darabben through its delivery of the Food Resilience Scoping Study, puts delivery of the Plant-Based Treaty on hold and revisits it once the scoping study is completed and has identified key priorities and actions.
So that's the motion that we're voting for at the moment?
That's correct.
But just by understanding, mayor, wasn't that the motion, because I came in and out of the meeting, wasn't that the motion that was?
No, it wasn't.
At the beginning of the meeting?
No, it wasn't, it was amended, amended option two.
But weren't they essentially the same?
No.
That's why I'm getting confused, mayor, because to me they seem essentially the same and we're going back and voting on something that has been previously been determined.
No, it was different, so, yeah. So are you going to have a vote on this one or are you abstaining?
Just let me read it again, mayor, if I can make it out, I'll just try and lodge it. I'm happy to vote for this motion.
Yep. Vote for it? Okay. So, so that's councillor Greco, councillor Arturi, councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster and councillor Ollaris voting for it. Against was councillor Selkos and councillor Bogliss and councillor Dimitriatus was abstaining. So therefore the motion has passed, so.
An interesting vote, mayor, it hasn't gone down party lines, which is really good to see.
Okay, we're on to nine point eight, which is the Container Deposit Scheme, nine point seven, which is the governance report. And does anyone want to put forward the motion for this one? Yeah, councillor. Oh, sorry, questions? Yes, do you have a question councillor O'Brien? Oh, no, does anyone else have questions in relation to the governance report? No? Okay. Would anyone like to put forward a motion in relation to this one? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, mayor, yeah, I'd like to move the.
Sorry. Do we have a second for that one? Councillor Sangster, so sorry, councillor O'Brien, you can speak now.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Yeah, so I would like to move the report that the officers have presented to us and just speak to a couple of elements in it. We, again, I guess, take some of this as a bit dry at times, but it is a really important reflection and offers valuable insights into the work that councillors are engaged in and highlights the breadth of activities underway or upcoming for officers. It also showcases the important committees councillors, officers and community members are involved in, connecting our work to the community in meaningful ways. This month I had the privilege of chairing the Darabben Nature Trust and the Climate Emergency Advisory Committees and I was inspiring to meet passionate locals volunteering their time and expertise to this vital work. And I want to express my gratitude to the individuals and organisations represented across all of council's committees. I'd also like to highlight appendix C in this report, which represents one of the two motions we plan to propose at the Australian Local Government Association Conference in June. My proposed motion focuses on the UN Sustainable Development Goals and Australia's national commitment to this framework. For those unfamiliar with the SDGs, the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development adopted by all UN member states in 2015 includes seventeen interconnected goals that address the complexities of sustainability. Despite initial engagement, national efforts to advance these goals seems to have stalled over the last number of years and local governments, however, hold significant untapped potential to drive action on these goals. The motion aligns to the conference theme of national priorities need local solutions. It recognises the extensive work that local governments already do to support the Sustainable Development Goals and aims to elevate these efforts, providing more resources to help us achieve even more. Examples of the outcomes sought by the goals that are relevant to local government include things like no poverty and zero hunger, with our work on supporting housing, food security and cost of living relief for vulnerable residents. Things like good health and wellbeing, which we deliver through quality maternal child health, youth services and safe inclusive community and open spaces. Quality education with a commitment to lifelong learning through our neighbourhood house network and maintaining our support for not-for-profit childcare services. Gender equality and reduced inequalities through inclusive engagement with multicultural communities and services for LGBTQIA residents. We also contribute or align with other critical areas like honouring Indigenous knowledge and practices, climate action, waste management and social justice. With so much already in train, imagine what we could achieve with coordinated resources and support from other levels of government. With just five years remaining to achieve these goals, it's crucial for the federal government to provide clear direction and support for the Sustainable Development Goals to meet its current commitments and have that flow down to local governments, ensuring our collective success in these vital commitments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to let everyone know that we've got fifteen minutes left. Was there a second for that one? Did you want to speak to that?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Councillor Dimitriatus, you want to speak?
Yes, mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like to raise to the governance report that was circulated earlier.
Sure, go ahead.
Does it come up on the screen? And I'd also like to add for point nine, to read the mayor and three councillors.
Yeah, I've got it there.
Oh, sorry, it's that point nine, yeah.
Yeah, I need that one moved, yeah. Okay. And, okay, have we got a second for this motion? So it includes what you've spoken to, it includes that what is now, yeah, point nine and then point eleven? You accept that amendment?
Mayor, can we ask a question about this amendment before we enter debate?
May I ask a question, yeah?
Is it, sorry, apologies, I didn't see this amendment circulated earlier today. Is the timing of receiving that report feasible?
I can answer that, mayor, if you like. Up through you, thanks councillor, yes.
Question?
Yes, a question, mayor, thank you. I just would like to understand from officers about the last part, including options for council to ensure the community battery. Is that feasible?
I would interpret that as referring to a request that's previously been received, so I would take that as the guidance for what is being sought. We would make inquiries of our insurer.
Any other questions? Okay, do you accept those changes? Yep, okay, fantastic, thank you. Does anyone want to talk to councillor Dimitriatus?
Oh, thank you, mayor. So just a couple of changes that have raised with the governance report, which we get every month in our council meeting agenda. Basically, the report lists the councillors who will be attending the 2025 Australian Local Government Association National General Assembly, and that's the mayor and three councillors, which will be decided shortly. In addition, the report also, this report also notes that Flow Power will not proceed with the endorsement of the community battery in Alphington, unfortunately. And I've raised this amendment for council to receive a report to facilitate the installation and operation of that community battery at two Wingrove Street, Alphington, which includes the option for council to ensure the community battery. And that's because there's been issues with getting insurance for this battery. So given council has been well known for our commitment to the climate emergency, I hope all councillors can support this amendment, which I think has been accepted anyway, but support the motion to install the community battery hopefully soon, which, and has been funded by the state government. So, yeah, I look forward to hopefully getting the battery soon in Alphington. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'd really like us to move to the vote, is that okay? Excellent, all right, all those in favour of the motion, raise your hand. That's passed unanimously, thank you. We will go to the Container Deposit Scheme item. Does anyone have any questions in relation to this one? No, do we have a motion? Councillor Arturi?
I'd like to move my amended officer's recommendation that was circulated earlier.
Thank you. Have we lost councillor Greco again? Can we see if we can try and get him back? Oh, there he is, fantastic, okay. Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Jelly, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, mayor, and thank you councillor Jelly for seconding the motion. I'll try and whizz through this. Since it's launched on the first November 2023, Victorians have embraced the CDS in record numbers, returning more than 1.3 billion bottles as of February 2025, diverting hundreds of millions of containers, bottles and cans from landfill and putting money in the pockets of Victorians and indeed residents in Darabben as well. Currently Darabben has five reverse vending machines and eight over the counter sites and one depot site. I want to thank officers for their work to date in working in partnership with VIZI and the state government to deliver these services for our community and of course for the work on this report. And of course for the work on this report. From this report, there is a helpful map that illustrates these sites for those following along at home. And what is immediately clear is quite a gap in the south-east and the north-east of the city. For this reason, consistent with the council's ongoing commitment to the scheme, we should continue to work with VIZI to explore opportunities to fill these gaps. And I, again, I thank councillor Jelly for her collaboration on this motion and for seconding it. Clause seven of the amended motion will now have council advocate for our community and hopefully take advantage of opportunities to expand the programme into suburbs like Bundura, Northcote and Thornbury. Bundura, of course, being my ward in the north-east. We often apply an equity lens to our decisions in this chamber, whether it be funding decisions or location of projects to ensure that all residents across our city have access to these services. This is, of course, no different. The argument is the same whether it is the north of the city or the south of the city. In this case, the Container Deposit Scheme uptake continues to increase and we should give all residents across our city, no matter their postcode, the opportunity to take advantage of the scheme. I look forward to the outcome of this advocacy in the coming months, and I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Jelly, would, as a second, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very brief today, there is a need for a, for a container deposit scheme sites to be located where people can access them easily. Northcote residents have told me that they want a container deposit scheme location that's closer to home, that they can actually access on foot or by bike or however they get around. This is actually especially important for people living in apartments and flats where storage space is limited, which means that people want to make more regular drop-offs of smaller quantities of containers rather than loading hundreds of containers into their car to drop them off once every few months. The scheme is good for our community because it improves the public amenity of public spaces through the reduction of discarded drink containers. And it's good for our environment because it ensures that recyclable containers don't end up in landfill. So I commend this motion to everybody here, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? In that case, I'm going to suggest we move straight to the vote in the interest of time, so. All those in favour of supporting the motion? That's carried unanimously, thank you all. I think I do need a procedural motion, I'm going to try very much and finish in the next ten minutes, but just in case. So thank you councillor Jelly, seconded.
For an extension of time of up to thirty minutes.
Yep. And all in favour? You have to raise your hands, go on. Councillor Greco, did you raise your hand there? In favour, yep, thank you. Okay, this one, now we're over to notices of motion, over to councillor Bogless to speak to this one. Oh, apologies, this is councillor Bogless's notice of motion. Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Selkos, so councillor Bogless, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor. I would also like to thank officers for their work in assisting this motion. I'd like to share an exciting proposal that has the potential to significantly improve connectivity, safety and wellbeing for our community here in Darabin. This proposal seeks to open the underutilised Melbourne waterways across Reservoir, Preston, linking through to Newlands Primary School and Coburg Hill Shopping Precinct. And will create a bike, pram and walking trail that connects several areas across Reservoir and beyond. During my campaign, there was significant community interest and the need for an improved active transport infrastructure in the Reservoir area. Particularly the demand for safer and more accessible routes for pedestrians, cyclists and families with prams. Council have already commenced investigations back in 2022 on the Northern Trail Strategy, including the Pipe Trail from High Street along the vacant Pipeline Reserve to Mary Creek Trail at Murray Road as one of the top temporaries in Darabin. And local members for Reservoir and Preston, Nathan Lambert spoke to this at Parliament earlier this month and invited Melbourne Water to a walk-through recently. We all know how important it is for our community to have safe, accessible and connective active transport routes, whether you're walking to a local park, cycling to work or pushing a pram to the shops. Safe and easy access is essential for ensuring that our residents can get around with convenience and safety. Some points of this linear reserve will save commuters 700 metres in time, and that's about fifteen, fifteen minutes. The trail I am proposing will connect several important streets in Reservoir, including Powell Street, Cameron Street, Dunston Street, Jackar, George Street and the laneway behind Benambra Street and North Street. These are key areas where residents are looking for better ways to move around, ways that don't involve driving or navigating busy roads, but that allow them to walk, cycle or use prams in a safe and enjoyable manner, connecting them to parks, schools, public transport and essential community facilities from Reservoir all the way through to Coburg North. By providing better routes, we can encourage more residents to engage in these activities, leading to improved physical health, better mental wellbeing and a stronger sense of community. In turn, this supports our broader goal of promoting sustainable and healthy living across Darabin. Safety is the heart of this proposal. The current conditions in these areas make it difficult for pedestrians currently and cyclists, especially those with prams, to navigate streets safely. By providing a dedicated trail away from busy roads and improving connections between neighbourhoods, we can help reduce the risks associated with traffic incidences and ensure that residents can get to where they need to go safely. This project also presents an opportunity for further enhancement of local environment by promoting the use of green space. The Melbourne Waterways and its surrounding areas could become a vibrant green corridor, fostering more plant life, improved shade and a cleaner, healthier environment for our residents. In addition, this new trail will help build a sense of community and people connect through shared spaces and outdoor activities. There will, so I ask my fellow councillors to support this motion and begin to explore the possibilities to create a trail in Reservoir and Preston that is in need of uplifting and will benefit generations to come and hopefully commence a partnership for ongoing opportunities in the future with Melbourne Water.
Thank you councillor Bogless. Would the second like to speak?
I'll keep it brief, Mayor, and I would like to thank councillor Bogless for listening to her community in the West Ward and proposing this today. I also like to say this corridor leads also to the North Central Ward, which is my ward, and I hope we can use this as a starting point to connect the whole of Darabin. And this improved bike, pram and walking trail would be greatly appreciated in the north of the municipality. So thank you, Connie, for bringing this to, and I hope everyone votes for it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who wants to speak against the motion? Anyone who'd like to speak for the motion? Councillor Jelly?
Mayor, I've got amendment that I circulated earlier.
Would you like to bring it up?
Perhaps I should read it out for the benefit of councillor Greco on screen?
Maybe just the bits that's changed?
Yes, so it introduces a new point, point five, to note that the Pipe Trail Extension is listed as priority six for the Northern Pipe Street slash St George's Road slash Cheddar Trail, as outlined in the 2022 Northern Trail Strategy, and requests that the report, that's, that the report includes an update on what action slash investment is needed to progress. So point A, priority action items two, three, four and five. And a new point six, which calls for a further report to be tabled no later than July 2025 to consider how to progress with previously endorsed transport projects identified through programmes such as Streets for People, Octopus Schools and Your Street, Your Say.
And there's another amendment up earlier in the document? Point four?
Yes, just a, yeah, amendment, the timing, sorry, I forgot about that one. So requesting that the report be prepared and tabled at the eighth of May, sorry, not the eighth of May, the May meeting, 2025.
Okay, councillor Bogless and Arturi, your thoughts? Oh, sorry, Selkos, too late, the night.
No, I don't agree with the amendment.
Okay, councillor Selkos?
No.
Okay. So.
Could I take a second for my amendment?
Yes, I'm just going to say I think it is an amendment. I think it seeks to do something a bit different than what the original one does though, so it's line ball, but I will call it an amendment. If I'm not incorrect, the first one was really seeking a brief report to inform the budget process, whereas this is a sort of bigger report, it appears. But I will let it go through, and is there a second for, yep, so would you like, you'd like to second? Okay, so do you want to speak to it then, councillor Jelly?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to confirm that officers have confirmed with me today that it is possible to include the requests at point five in the report for the budget considerations for this council. And I did receive advice on the other elements noted at point six and adjusted the timing to call for a report no later than July to reflect that. So I'd like to commend councillor Bogless on her advocacy for the extension of the Northern Pipe Trail for walking, prams and cycling, and thank officers who have contributed to the development of the Northern Trail Strategy. As is noted in the strategy, there are a number of priorities identified to improve connection along this trail, which has flow-on benefits for the health and wellbeing of our whole community in Darabin. The extension of the Pipe Trail to connect with the wonderful Mary Creek Trail will ensure that more people can easily and safely access the Mary Creek Corridor. But this item comes in at item six in the strategic priorities for this trail, so I urge council to commit to the remaining priority action items to ensure that we are taking a strategic holistic approach that considers the trail as a whole. This amendment calls for a report to come to us in the new financial year to consider how this council can progress on outstanding transport projects that have previously been endorsed by our community and by council. And this is a topic that has come up in recent council meetings, so hopefully it's something that everybody will support. And I note that as I cycled through Preston and Reservoir to Reservoir Primary School last Friday for National Ride to School Day, where I met you, Mayor, which was great fun, I saw evidence of what our community keeps telling us, that our bicycle network is disconnected and patchy. We have many good projects that will help connect the disparate network of paths and bike lanes through Preston and Reservoir that are sitting in the wings, waiting for council to fund capital works. So I urge all councillors to vote in support of this amendment so that we can deliver on the projects that our community has told us that they want, which will enable them to live healthy, well-connected lives in their neighbourhoods.
Okay, councillor Jelly, did you want to, councillor O'Brien, sorry, would you like to speak to this?
That's okay, Mayor, it is very late for us all right now, thank you. Just to reiterate a couple of the points, so yes, thank you to councillor Bogless for bringing this forward. The second being councillor Selkos talking about the connectivity of the network and us now hearing from councillor Jelly on the same issue. It's an issue that a lot of places face connectivity falls away and then people are left exposed on roads or paths that are just not suitable. So I think doing that work to build the connectivity is important. That Northern Trail Strategy has been around for a while. I was working on that back in my Latrobe days, so pre-2020, so I'm guessing this is a revision of it. Connecting these projects, doing the work to understand what that means for Darabin makes sense for us. And I also think at point six, we have a lot of quality projects that have been identified through other programmes in the past. We know this has become a bit of a vexed issue for us, so I hope we can all move forward. Yeah, looking at this more holistically for the next four years and understanding what we've already heard from our community and building on that for the next council plan. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to go to the vote. Oh, councillor Greco, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just very quickly. I think point, point five and point six are really complimentary to the, to the other parts of the motion and I'm glad that they have been brought up. It's actually a good reminder of things that, work that has been done or strategic work that has been done. And also calling for a report, I think is a good idea as a way of keeping these things on our radar. So I see them as very, very complimentary and I just don't understand why that couldn't have been accepted by the mover in the second, so we could have got through this much quicker. And, but, yeah, I'm glad it actually completes the, the, the motion that has been brought forward by, by the original mover. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour, raise your hand. Councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster and councillor Greco, all of those opposed, raise your hand. Councillor Arturi, councillor Bogless, councillor Demetriadis, councillor Selkos and councillor O'Laurs. So I think that takes us back to the original motion. Did anyone want to talk to this one? Anything more than we've already spoken? Okay, so let's put this one to the vote then, all those in favour, raise your hand. So that's carried unanimously, thank you. We have no urgent business, we have no confidential business. So I would like to just thank everyone, this has been obviously a meeting that there was lots of, people had lots of strong feelings in relation to issues. We got there, we're now closing the meeting at nine thirty-seven.